...order and we're glad to have Attorney General Josh Stein here today. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner McCoy to lead the pledge and have the dedication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our father, we come before you today just saying thanks. Thanks for giving us another day. Therefore, we ask you to come toward us in this meeting, a meeting which is very important to Harney County as well as to the citizens of this county. Give us our, give us the knowledge and the wisdom to take in what our attorney general has promised today and let it be a benefit for all of our citizens and this county. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'm going to start on my right with Commissioner McCoy and just go around the table and ask everyone to introduce themselves and who you're representing, what department or town or whatever.
Oh, I'm Commissioner McCoy and I'm representing county and with all the citizens here in Harney County.
Paul Johnson, Harney County Commissioner.
Brooks Matthews, Harney County Commissioner, District Three.
White Snow, Harney County Attorney.
Richard Allen, County Manager.
Morning, Colley Price, Assistant County Manager.
Chris Appel, Senior Staff Attorney.
Paul Polinski, Director of Social Services.
Wade Heshe, Chef upon a county.
Larry Smith, Emergency Services Director.
Tim Adams, Agent of Services.
Lynn Fadmore, County Sheriff.
Jermaine White, Assistant Superintendent, Harney County Schools.
Mary Robert E. Nello, Campbell University School of Osteo-Pathic Medicine.
And I'm David Tillman, I'm with the Public Health Department of Campbell.
Amy Brown, I'm the Center Director at Daymark Recovery Services.
Corey Hess, the President of Harney County.
Suzanne Mathews, District Attorney for Harney County.
Mark Morris, Executive Director at Good Hope Hospital.
Mary James, the Hall's Public Health Administrator with the Health Department.
Great for Josh Stein, Attorney General.
And I'm Louis Weatherston, the Harney County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to welcome Attorney General Stein. Attorney General Stein grew up in Chapel Hill. He's graduated from Dartmouth College, entered Law and Public Policy Program. He's a partner. He and his wife Anna have three children. He was first sworn in, or sworn into his first term as the 50th Attorney General in 2017 and a second term in 2021. As Attorney General, he is focused on protecting North Carolina families from crime and consumer fraud. I think I've called your office once.
Hope you may help.
He is, while as the Attorney General, Mr. Stein has worked to protect taxpayers, seniors, students, and military families from fraud. His Department of Justice won awards for settlements of more than 1.5 billion scam artists. He's working to improve data security and is leading a national effort to combat robocalls. Thank you.
Happen one day, but we're trying.
Hey, keep fighting. Mr. Stein is also working to make North Carolina law enforcement and criminal justice systems fair, combating the opioid crisis and get treatment and recover resources for North Carolinians struggling with addiction, protecting clean air and water, and fighting the teen vaping epidemic. At this time, I'm going to introduce, it would be great pleasure to introduce Attorney General Josh Stein for some opening remarks.
Chairman Weatherston, thank you. And I really appreciate all of you taking time to talk about this issue, but I know you're here because, like me, this is something that drives you. The number of people who are struggling with opioid addiction, the number of families that are suffering from loved ones dying or being perpetually sick. This is the deadliest drug epidemic in American history. And we are at the deadliest moment of this epidemic. And just to give you a sense of scale, we'd actually started to bend the curve and reduce the number of opioid overdoses in 2019. We'd done a lot of work, Stop Act, reduce over prescribing of the pills. And then the pandemic hit and all the problems of the pandemic, isolation, job loss, anxiety, depression, those are all factors that cause addiction. And so there was a spike from 2019 to 2020, a 40% increase in overdose deaths. 2019 was the most in history and it went up 40% the next year. And then 2021, it went up again, not by 40%, but it was another increase. First time in American history, more than 100,000 Americans died of an overdose death in 2021. That is a record. We never want to see it broken. Although I'm worried about the first number of months in 2022. Here in Harney County, y'all have been touched, 43 overdose deaths and 229 emergency department visits in 2020. And I know that you all know some of the families that were affected. And then you ask yourself, what in the world? How did we get here? And what's tragic is that this is a crisis born of human greed. The pharmaceutical companies in the late 90s started saying, these drugs are the most effective ways to treat pain and they're not addictive. We of course know now that neither of those things are true. There are other ways to treat pain and these pills are highly addictive. I helped put together a national bipartisan coalition of attorney generals from practically every state in the country. And we took Sackler family, Purdue Pharma to court, many other drug companies to court. And we're winning. We won a $26 billion National Opioid Settlement last year with the three major drug distributors, the folks who take the drugs from the manufacturer to the pharmacies, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, one of the manufacturers. We also have another $8 billion in the pipeline in settlements and principles with three other drug manufacturers. And those are being finalized as I speak. Of the $26 billion, North Carolina's share is $750 billion. And when we did this, we did it in partnerships with the counties. And we made a choice early on that because we know this is a problem that is felt at the local level and is responded to at the local level, whether it's the jails or the social services. You all are on the front lines of trying to deal with your residents who are struggling. And so we made a decision in North Carolina that is unique in this country. We put 85% in the hands of local governments and 15% to the states. Regardless of which level of government gets the money, the counties or the state, it has to all go for the same purposes, which are prevention, harm reduction, treatment, or recovery services. And there are a lot of options within those range of services. Things like evidence-based addiction treatment, medication-assisted treatment, recovery support, housing, employment services, early intervention, naloxone distribution, syringe services, post-overdose response teams with EMT, criminal justice diversion programs, addiction treatment for folks incarcerated in county facility, re-entry programs. All of these are permissible uses. And I've been having meetings like this all across the state in the mountains, here in Piedmont and the coast, to learn how counties are tackling this issue. And there are so many effective strategies. And one reason why we wanted you all to have more control over than the state level is different communities have different assets and different gaps. Some have established post-overdose response teams, others have no treatment facilities, others have no detox facilities. And so we wanted you all to be able to tailor the services to what your needs are. In Hickory, we talked with the police department about their law enforcement assistance diversion, same with Fayetteville. Cumberland County was engaged in extensive community outreach programs to help them determine, commissioners determined how they were going to choose to spend their money. Wake County is doing exactly the same thing, a series of community meetings. So there are just a lot of different things different counties are doing with their funds. I know that you all have a collaborative where you're trying to get all the people around the table to think through how to spend the money. And I hope that the next part of our agenda, we can hear some of your ideas and some of your strategies. We have a tool that's meant to help you all think through some of these ideas. It's called the Community Opioid Resources Engine of North Carolina Core NC. My team can't remember that one. Core NC, but the website's very good. It's ncopioidsettlement.org, ncopioidsettlement.org. And it's chock full of information. There's strategies that counties are deploying. There's a dashboard of the number of overdose deaths, the pills that are prescribed, the social determinants of health that is county-specific. And this is important. It will also include an investments dashboard. A requirement of the settlement that my office insisted on was full transparency. We want your residents of Harney County, we want every North Carolina resident to know how our leaders chose to invest these funds. What programs did you all support? How much did you give them? And here's what's important. What were the outcomes? What did they achieve at the end of the year? Because the stream on this fund stream is 18 years. And so if it ain't working, change and do something different. Don't be wedded to a strategy and decision you make in year one if it doesn't prove its worth. And then in terms of the money you all are going to be getting, it's 6.3 million over the life of the settlement. And in year one, it's about $800,000. And we front loaded it so that about 40% of it is in the first five years. But we were intentional about letting it continue for a longer time because too often there'll be an infusion of cash. It's hard to figure out how do you spend it in two years? And then the money's gone and then you've got this infrastructure that you can no longer support. And so we wanted to include that in this deal. So as I've traveled the state, I have met really remarkable people. People whose lives have been impacted, often tragically by this crisis. People who dedicated their lives helping other people get well. All of whom are driven with a passion to make a difference in people's lives. And it's incredibly inspiring. And so I am optimistic, even though we're at a bleak moment in this crisis, I'm optimistic. Because with that kind of passion and drive and strategy that we're seeing along with these new resources, I am certain that there will be more people alive and healthy in Harney County next year and the year after that and the year after that than otherwise would be. We were not deluded into thinking this is going to be an easy problem to solve. We know how deep-seated it is, but we're optimistic that working together we can make a difference. And I'm honored to be here with you all and look forward to hearing your thoughts on all these issues.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
But that's some good information and I appreciate that. We appreciate you coming today. At this time, I'm going to call on our Assistant County Manager, Colley Price, and our Senior Staff Attorney, Chris Appel, to update us on what's happened in Harney County so far and what our plans are moving forward.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, good morning, everybody. So glad everybody could make it. It's good to see you. Attorney General Stein, welcome to Harney County. Thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to be here. Let me thank you and your department for all the hard work in this settlement. Because now, you're exactly right. You're going to see the passion in this room about where we stand, what we're fighting against, and how we can rise up together as a team and make this happen. So thank you for all your efforts. So let me just briefly go over kind of where we're at. You have actually touched on a lot of the points that I'm going to talk about because that's exactly where we're at. And talking to the good folks sitting at this table, each one has a different aspect of where they're coming from, from a 911 call to the jail, to the hospital, to Good Hope, to the Health Department, and from our research universities here and from the school system and our municipalities. So that's what you're going to see here sitting at the table. So let me just kind of go through about three or four points and then I want to kind of open it up for a couple of folks to make some comments and then have a roundtable if that's okay with you.
Sounds perfect. Thank you, sir.
All right, so Chris and I, over the past quite a few months, workshops, seminars, conferences, the wonderful Zoom calls that we all sit in on, understanding where our county is at, what has happened. I think that's where the rubber meets the road, is sitting in meetings like this and kind of understanding what you're dealing with. You're right, each county is different. There's different aspects of where we're coming from. So we formed a task force, if you will, a steering committee. We've just just in the infancy stages that we met a couple of weeks ago. We're going to have another meeting at the end of October to kind of put a strategic plan together. Understanding the problem in our communities and our organizations, our municipalities coming together as a group and make sure there's no redundancies. That's the key as far as we doing this. What is the right hand or the left hand? I don't know. That's kind of what we want to stop. So we're trying to get a feel for all of that. Then our great partners at Campbell University educating our physicians, I think that is a big key as far as substance abuse, behavioral health, opioid management, substance management, and understanding that about kind of where we're at as a whole throughout Harney County. And every meeting we've been in, guys, there's been the word of a detox center. You talked about that, okay? How does it work? How much does it cost? What is the benchmark? Where we're at? We're looking at that. We understand that. The sheriff is looking at that really hard as far as where he's coming from. We're trying to stop this revolving door. As when somebody comes in, they get narcan, they go to jail, and all of a sudden, three weeks later, they're right back in the same way. The homelessness, what's happening with that, kind of where we're at? Where is that?
They're addicted before they get to jail.
Exactly.
They're addicted while they're in jail, although they're not getting drugs. And they're addicted when they get out of jail. We got a break.
That's exactly right. So then the family members, and I, David Craft, you did on the record and we had one of our own, another Health Department, Latoya Adams, who spoke about black grandparents, now his parents. And Mary James will touch on that in just a minute, but he said two things that caught me. He says, unless it's happening to us, we think it's happening somewhere else. You know, that's true. And then he also said, family disease, don't be afraid to get help. Don't be embarrassed by it. You know, don't throw it under the table. It's tough. It's tough to swallow. It's tough to deal with. But it's something we're going to have to overcome. And with these funds, I feel that this is going to help as far as putting this plan in place. So where does that leave us? It leaves us with a strategic comprehensive plan of what you just mentioned, with the 6.3 million that is coming from Harney. Dr. Tillman and I were talking with Chris last week and he brought up three very good points. Gather all the information, comprehensive assets and needs, identify the gaps, and price tag those gaps. So with the 6.3 is the strategic plan and there's other grant opportunities that we can fill in the gaps with Good Hope, Harney Health, Sheriff's Department, municipalities. That's kind of the game plan that we're looking at as far as kind of where we stand. So again, in the infancy stages, we might have a very big meeting with kind of this group next tomorrow. Try to put everybody at the table that needs to be at the table so we can understand kind of where we're at and how to utilize these funds. So with that being said, is there anything you'd like to add?
Like I said, we've been in a lot of meetings and conversations. I've talked with other surrounding counties and their kind of attorneys, what they're doing. And the whole idea is, I mean, there's so many needs and we don't want to just, here's our 6.3 over 18 years, here, one thing, and that's it. We feel it's extremely important to have this comprehensive plan, get the biggest bang for our buck out of 6.3, but also try to find other resources because it's going to take a lot of resources. There's so many needs that the whole key is to get this plan, fill in the gaps, and make the best recommendations that we have of all these ideas and let commissioners make the best decision for the people of this county. One thing you may find once you have that strategic plan, I was out in Graham County and they did a strategic plan like two or three years ago and used it to apply for federal grant monies. But, so they had the plan already. Every time they learn of a new funding opportunity, it's just play and play. So this 6.3 million is going to be helpful, but you alluded to this, it isn't the only source of funding out there. And if you have a plan and you have demonstrated successes, then it makes a lot of other funds.
At a lot of conferences that we've been in, especially the last one in Concord, their whole topic was opioid crisis. Surrey County, Caldwell County had a lot of good plans of what you're talking to. Here's the good thing about government, don't reinvent the wheel because there's probably somebody out there that's done something really smart. So we're kind of looking around us as far as kind of where we're at. And then with all these great partners we got around this table, we feel very confident about where we're at.
That's great.
Chairman, if you don't mind, I've got about four folks that want to speak very briefly and just kind of give just kind of an update.
Right. Yeah, I was going to call on Corey Hess next.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. I also have Marlee Zazik, who is our Chief Nursing Officer, with us today. She was, ran our emergency department for a number of years and has worked in the EDs in multiple functions throughout the hospital. So any clinical questions, I want to make sure that she was available and can probably give us a better day-to-day overview of what this epidemic looks like. Right now, we're seeing about one overdose a day coming through our facilities. The numbers that you were reading too, I think I know to some degree are underreported. The challenge that we have is, you know, typically the numbers that we're submitting are based on primary diagnosis. What we're finding is of all of our involuntary commit patients and a lot of mental health patients that come through, about a quarter of those derive from some sort of opioid drug addiction and that's why they're there. So they may not be there, they may come in for something else. It's not their primary diagnosis, but that is a major issue that they have going on. So we're actually at the point right now where we're switching electronic medical records this week, which is going to be really fun. So Friday night, we're going to be on paper for a while, but...
It'll go smoothly.
And we got a hurricane coming too, so.
It's epic.
Yeah, right. So we're moving to Epic, which will be wonderful because it'll allow us to track this a little bit better as well. But the biggest challenge, you know, they come through our ED and this is just this endless cycle of, we treat them, we stabilize them, we send them back out into the community. And the folks that do the outpatient care here are wonderful, but they're resource strapped like everybody. So, and especially for folks that have no means of payment. And a lot of these folks that come through are, you know, almost drug addicted, bouncing from space to space. So there's never a treatment plan there. There's a treatment plan they leave with, they say, you know, go follow up here. Never happens. They come back through the ED again. And we're holding at any given time between eight and 15 IVC slash opioid dependent folks in our ED, which causes major issues when you've got, I mean, A, it's a very challenging patient population. B, if you show up with a broken arm or something, you know, we are always in a backlog and staffing is a challenge, everybody knows in healthcare right now. And, you know, these folks, it's an endless cycle that is really, really hard to break without good outpatient treatment. So we've talked about a few things. We have a great community paramedic program in conjunction with EMS right now. Right now, we are not focused on the opioid crisis per se, but I think that's something that we could definitely get into with additional funding.
Which are the community paramedic, because we're repeat users of the ED?
Yes, yep. Yes, right now, we identify the high volume, you know, COPD, CHF, pneumonia patients, those kind of folks. And we do follow our checks to make sure there's, you know, they're not pre-admitted or following a medication order and so forth, yeah. So being able to add some sort of opioid dependency piece to that, I think would be wonderful. And going and fighting.
We saw that in Western Carolina, really interesting thing where they were using community paramedics in ambulance to actually do psych, kind of home visits, because some people are an hour away out there. And they would be able to then do a telemedicine meeting, you know, the community paramedic would connect with a doctor who could then re-prescribe their medication-assisted treatment. So it was a very innovative way, trying to meet people where they are because if you just don't do that, they're not going to come in.
Right.
They don't have transportation, so.
Yeah, so that is something that we're working towards. And we actually were recently the recipient of a grant from the state for psychiatrists in Harney County. So that's always been a major challenge. I mean, it's just, again, the lack of resources. But we're recruiting a full-time psychiatrist. We've got a tele network set up within all our clinics right now. We've got a tele network set up within all our clinics right now, so the goal of that program is, you know, A, to be able to treat, or at least start treating with some of these folks in the EDs, and have somebody manage that as well as anybody that ends up inpatient, but also to be able to provide those tele services in our clinics too. So it just gives more touch points throughout the community, and then, you know, working with folks like Daymark and everybody else in the community, you know, how do we share that resource? Right now, Kefir Valley has a psychiatry residency program as well, so that will allow us to rotate residents through. They've got adolescents, child fellowship as well, so, you know, we will start accumulating resources over time as we can get a full-time doc in here. So, we're actively recruiting that. And then just as far as from a clinic perspective, we put a lot of heart stops on morphine equivalent units that are prescribed and so forth. I mean, it was never really a major issue with our network anyway. We've become just more and more stringent on that and cognizant. You know, one of the other big challenges, not just opioids too, it's, you know, a lot of these folks have moved on to fentanyl and other street drugs because it's harder and harder to get prescribed drugs. And a lot of times, from what I understand from my providers, Marley may be able to, you know, fentanyl's not always picked up in drug screens also. So we're seeing a lot of that coming through, and there's a lot of dirty drugs out there now. So I mean, you know, it's just this challenging cycle, but, yeah, I think meeting people where they are and having some options for folks that cannot, you know, don't have insurance and can't afford to pay cash in this community would be a huge help because those are folks that seem to continue coming back.
I just, I'm hopeful. I'm not realistic, but I'm hopeful that Raleigh gets that together. We have the governor, the speaker, and the president pro town all saying the same thing, that people move to Cal, and it would be well-served by expanding Medicaid. And we're one of only a handful of states in the country that haven't done that. And that's hundreds of thousands of people who would get health insurance who could then pay for their treatment. I mean, healthcare treatment isn't free, and you can't expect people to get services if there's no means to pay for it. And the thing is, is we, as North Carolina, are paying the federal government for this. We're just saying, we don't want the benefit that we're already paying for. And so I'm hopeful. That is the single most important thing, you know, in our national assembly, to do in the fight against opioid. Is just work this out.
Great.
Thank you, Corey. Appreciate it. Paul, would you like to talk a little bit about what you're seeing in your area?
Well, I am. I want to say a few things, and then I'll let Tim Adams, he is our newest supervisor in Children's Services. He was on the front lines. He was a Children's Services social worker out in the field for a number of years. So, I just want to say a few things. We currently have 220 children in DSS custody right now, and I've checked with my staff, probably about 140 to 150 of those children are having issues related to drugs. You know, one thing that we've talked about for a number of years, and Attorney General just mentioned that, when children come into custody, if they are receiving Medicaid, then once they come into custody, the parents no longer receive Medicaid. So the children can continue to receive because they're now in DSS custody. But if the parents aren't receiving, then we have to depend on indigent funds and everything to try to get them treatment. So, you know, that's something that we've noticed for a number of years, you know, how are you going to ask somebody to go to treatment if they can't afford it? And if indigent funds are not available, what are you going to do? But, you know, Tim and the other supervisors sat down, and they have some information, and I'd like for Tim to go ahead and share that for us.
Thank you. So I think that the way that we looked at it when we're looking at families and opioids is that, kind of once that drug hits the family, it's almost like a rock hitting water, and it kind of spreads through the entire family system. Like directly, we get involved, and we can protect the children by removing them from the home. But if the main goal is reunification, what are we able to put into the family to make them recover? And like Paul said, if we're taking away Medicaid, if we're taking away the ability for that family to now access resources, it makes it hard for us to reunify. Even if we can recover with, even if we get the child safe, how can we effectively serve that family? And then, that family who's brought up in that dynamic of substance abuse is supported in that same dynamic. So they lack the education to be able to move forward. So hearing the ideas of locally accessible detox centers, educating are excellent ways to go because lots of times in these cases, we're going outside of this count to get those services provided. We have to go farther away, and we have to get people who don't have transportation to be able to move from one spot to another. So a majority of the time, the people who are transporting them are frontline workers in our county, driving them to services because they can't access them. So it puts us in a spot with that. And as far as working with the hospitals, I know that there was a weekend where we're working, where Betsy Johnson Hospital over that weekend because I was there. There was only one child that was born that weekend that was a substance. And it wasn't all from Harnett County because it serves multiple counties, but that was a staggering thing for me. Because then these children from infancy are exposed to the effects of, most of the time, opioids. Because even if they are in MAT, that child still has a risk of suffering the effects of being on that drug while they're in MAT, which, really, we have trainings now that tell us that's the gold standard for us to be looking for for treatment because it can get people to be affected. But it's still, there's a negative impact to these children, and these parents who are using them. So we're seeing this as a huge, I think that if we could work on eliminating this, we would see our numbers in foster care go down. We would see families be more successful because opioid addiction is not just a, it's not just an addiction. It is a difficult addiction because this is the addiction where the withdrawal symptoms are so significant. Sticking to treatment is so hard for these parents to do because they lack resources and support. So for them to be able to be successful, even in the best case scenario where they have wonderful support and access to all the resources they're under, so this is a huge problem for the children, the families in our community. Because I'm sure we're here that the responsibility goes to grandparents. Some of these grandparents are really beyond the ability to care for these children, but we try to put them in support so these kids can stay with family, so they can be with someone familiar. Because as much as we like to think that foster care is wonderful, and it is a great way to protect children, kids do better when they're with their family. And we need to find ways to do that, so.
Ripple effects, or moniker, what a metaphor. Setting aside our desire to have people who are healthy and happy and productive, like that's a goal in and of itself. But the consequence is, everyone else in the community is taxpayers. When these folks hit the ED all the time, it comes back to us in the form of the health insurance agreement that we have to pay. If they're being born with parents who are, have substance use disorder, they go up in the NICU. I always have a wake, waking at NICU, and something like 80% of the babies in that NICU that day at their senses were there for substance use. Takes 30 days for a small baby to kind of come through, and meanwhile, they're dependent on the drug. And so they're just screaming for 30, you know, most of their waking hours, the first 30 days went away to come in to be alive. It costs $4,000 or $5,000 a day to treat those people. Those payments are borne by all of us. And you have the social services costs, having to try to work with these families and take kids out. When we go, they're removing a kid, even if it's in their best interest because their parents are incapable of caring for them, the long-term consequences to that child are worse, making them more likely to go on a criminal justice system. All of these things end up, we end up having to pay for it as taxpayers. So, you know, even if you, even if there was somebody with a hard heart who doesn't care about the person with addiction, they should care about their own wallet, and we're all paying for this crisis.
I want to ask Sheriff Wayne Coenstein to take a minute to talk about how opioid addiction is affecting his department.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the things I just did this past Friday, we put in for a grant, and it's the, it's Medicaid assisted treatment for vivatrol to, to help with the inmates that are coming in and Medicaid them. But the grant's like, there's one fund that's got $2 million in it, and then there's another one that's got $15 million in it. And it's through the Department of Public Safety. I'm not sure how they're going to determine who gets what amount. Maybe you can answer that, but, you know, you relate it to the 43 overdose deaths. I don't know whether that ranks us above everybody else, but one of the things I would look at and hope is that they fund that money for the ones that they see where it's, where having the most problems. Now, as far as the jail, you know, we've had overdose deaths. They come in, they're having withdrawals, and they, when we did have the inmate, he and his roommate together were coming down off of their highs. And unfortunately, he had some problems, and we found him, and he later on passed away. But I would love for the money and for us to be able to fund, you know, and we, we partner with Southern Health Partners. We would like to see somebody, and the money put there, put that fully funded, to have that person to look after them when they come in. Because we're not doctors. Our detention officers are not doctors. It would really be nice if we could get funding to put a full-time person in there, or several people, to look after the inmates when they come in.
I encourage you to talk to Sheriff Miller in Buncombe. I actually did a meeting like this in the county jail up there. And what they're doing with Medicaid assisted treatment in their jails is so impressive. And, you know, the population at greatest risk of death are people leaving incarceration. Because we talked about it, they're addicted when they come in, they're addicted when they're there, and they're addicted when they get out. The problem is, is their tolerance has dropped substantially because they've been to jail and haven't been using. So they come out using the same amount that they used to use, and then they overdose and die. Something like 40 times greater chance of death. Because of the work they do, and they have these peer support specialists, people who've been through it and come out of the other's eye, who manage the program, the death rate of people leaving incarceration in Buncombe County is less than the general population. It's truly remarkable. And they are having much less reincarceration because the folks, a lot of people who are in the jail have committed crimes, but they've committed crimes because they're addicted. And if you can stop the addiction, you're going to stop their criminal behavior. And so they've been seeing a decline in people coming back through the turnstile. So, there is really great stuff, and I'm really happy to hear that you're looking into this too, as well, Sheriff.
Would our friends from Campbell like to take a minute and talk about what's going on at Campbell University?
Yeah, I'd love to. On behalf of the residents of Harnett County, I want to thank everybody for this conversation, and especially just applaud the way that Coley and Chris have been leading this process and taking the work just very seriously and thinking about what tremendous impact. You know, at the last meeting, we talked about the fact that few of us will make decisions in our professional lives that are significant. It's a number of lives that can be saved by the decisions made in the investments in our county around this issue. And it's not a new issue, but many of you, we've been talking about this for more than a decade. And it's changed. The issues that we see now have evolved into where what used to be a prescription drug problem and a pill problem is now a polysubstance problem where fentanyl is mixed in with stimulants and these kind of things. It's been affecting, every time we come up with a set of solutions, it adapts. And what that screams for is a comprehensive set of solutions, a real strategic plan. And that's what Coley and Chris have been really encouraging us to do, is to invest our time as we think about this money into thinking about how we could leverage these substantial resources into a plan that acknowledges how challenging it is from prevention all the way through recovery, and thinks about all the assets and where those gaps are, and exactly the way that Coley described. And so, bring greetings and commitments from Campbell and Campbell's leadership. I got messages from our vice presidents and deans encouraging us to commit ourselves in terms, you know, when you think about Harnett County's resources and what makes us an unusual rural county. And we're rural adjacent. We've got counties above us and below us that are not rural. And so that makes it an interesting spot. And you've got a university that has, you know, been rooted in Harnett County and Booey's Creek, North Carolina, its entire existence. And so, we should be able to leverage a unique set of skills to the benefit of our people. And so across the health sciences, both beyond, thinking about our school of education, our law school, thinking about how we could try to, through the use of a strategic plan, complement one another in terms of government, community-based organizations. One of the big things we talked about, last time you were in our county, Attorney General Stein, to lead a conversation, like it's not new for you either, you were in our county to lead a conference focused on how we can use faith communities to transform in responses to this. You know, these are things that Campbell could be very useful in trying to help get the most out of that investment by complementing these dollars with expertise, with students who can get great experience by investing in our community and learning through service, as well as helping our partners to write grants and complement these funds with additional funds. So mostly, I just want to say that we are committed to serve alongside you and to thank Coley and Chris for taking seriously the strategic planning side of this work.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, go ahead, Chair. Thank you very much, and thank you, Attorney General, for being here today. Just from the osteopathic medical school side and the interprofessional nature of our institution, right, working with our nurse practitioners, PAs, physical therapy, I mean, all of the different assets that we have available being located here in this county, one of my goals and passions is education. And I'm family medicine and pain medicine board certified. I worked at Fort Bragg for a while, about 12 years in the last seven years specifically in pain management. And just one of the things to add on, you know, not to disrespect the psychiatrists coming in and stuff, is we need to do a better job at educating our primary care physicians and nurse practitioners and PAs. Because that's how we did it at Fort Bragg. We, as the pain clinic, outreach to primary care and became, made them more comfortable with caring for patients with opioid use disorders. When I first started, I can tell you, they looked at me funny, but I'm family medicine first, right? So I got in there and I said, "Look, I was scared too. I didn't want to do it either." You know, I didn't want to treat patients. I didn't have the compassion maybe at that time, or the empathy. But eventually, with skills and learning and extra training, by the time I left Fort Bragg, almost all of the primary care physicians were willing to prescribe or learn about buprenorphine and other options and caring for patients. We're not going to be able to do this with just a psychiatrist, or an addiction psychiatrist, or a pain medicine provider that's passionate with the taking care of opioid problems. So I think one of the great things would be to do is get out to our primary care clinicians and enhance their abilities to care for our patients. Number, the other idea I had too that really came about was, can we fund? Can we think about scholarships? Can we think about awards for our medical students, our PAs that are training right here in Al County, to attract them to stay local, working with your system or whatnot? Get them to commit to five or 10 years, support them in their pain training that they go out and do. So, that's kind of my thoughts and focus, and I really have great respect for you and for all of the commissioners here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I, Mary Jane had something she'd like to say with grandparents and parents.
So, our focus is to discuss the families that have been impacted through our grandparents raising grandchildren program. And I talked to Coley a little bit, and I thought I would just give you a couple of stories of the way these families have been affected. One example, we have grandparents who currently have custody of two grandchildren. They were contacted by social services in another state that their daughter had delivered twins. So they, if they did not go and pick up these children, they would be placed in the foster care system. In this case, they picked up the children and are now raising four children on a fixed income. We are also working with the great-grandfather who is raising his great-grandchild because his grandson is facing incarceration. We also had grandparents that were raising their autistic grandchild, and the grandmother passed away unexpectedly. She was the primary caregiver, leaving the grandfather to pick up the pieces. These are just a few of the stories that we hear on a daily basis. Our grandparents are faced with many obstacles once they accept these children into care. They are on fixed incomes. They are having housing issues. They, you know, for example, you go from a family of two to a family of six overnight. And they're facing their own health issues. two to a family of six overnight. And they're facing their own health issues. The other side is they're dealing with the worry of their own child that is actually in the substance abuse. What did I do wrong? Is this my fault? You know, what can I do to make sure my grandchildren don't have the same issues? And then you have the children. They come with their own set of concerns. They have depression, behavioral issues, and often developmental delays. These children are also faced with the finding help of their grandparents and the concern that they may also be abandoned again one day. So we have a grandparents-raising grandchildren support group. It's a time for our grandparents to come together to talk about their frustrations, their concerns. We actually get speakers to come in and talk about homework tips. Right now, they're struggling with math. You know, they're still trying to carry the one. So, you know, if you help your child with math recently, they don't carry the one, and the grandparents are very frustrated. And I understand. It is frustrating. It's a new math.
I'm glad they did that after my kids.
Right. There's no checking and carrying. So those are the things that seem small that are big. You know, you've got teenagers, and they have their own set of issues. So, you know, as we're going into planning things for the future, we need to remember this subset of individuals that have stepped up and that are, are doing the right thing, their grandchildren. And it's not easy. And it's not easy for the grandchildren.
Yeah. In Lumberton, Bronx County, there was a woman who gave testimony on, she has like eighteen years in active use, and she had one child a long time ago and lost that child custody, and then had a second child and was faced with losing custody. And that's what she needed, you know. People sometimes need that push. That's what she needed. Fortunately, both the daughters went to her mother. But she got herself, you know, she had used, I think, twelve years, and she got custody back of her daughter. She was there, her daughter was there, and her mother was there, and like, everybody was crying. And so to your point, when you see families, yeah, it's, it's kind of interesting. Of course, they have to be safe. A kid has to be safe. So it's hard. But it really serves that as part of the importance of the work y'all are doing.
I just want to say one other, like, I know Mary Jane brought up about grandparents-raising grandchildren. You know, Tim would tell you, we see a lot of that in our, in our agency, where we end up giving custody to the grandparents or they get guardianship of the children. But it's not a financial windfall. Like Mary Jane said, they're on fixed income, social security. They may have retired from the mill or something like that. Well, there are, there is a, one program that the grandparents can apply for. It's a work first program. It's where if the grandparents apply for it, the children can't continue to receive medication. The only financial assistance the grandparents get for one child is a hundred eighty-six dollars. A hundred eighty-six dollars nowadays does not take you very far per month. If you have two children at home, it's a little bit over two hundred dollars. So grandparents are not, they're having to spend their own money. They're having to find other resources, food banks or whatever. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that there's not a lot of assistance that grandparents, especially financial assistance that they can't receive.
Dr. White, what do you see in the Hardy County schools?
Thank you very much, Chair, and with this, and Attorney General Stein, thank you so much for conducting this conversation today. It's just kind of listening to the comments around the table. It's been very sobering to hear, because these are things that we deal with on a regular basis. Just in the notes that I've taken this morning, you know, when you think about the family members and the grandparents' parents, we as a school district have to deal with the traumas of those students, and the lifestyles of those dependent, you know, family members that are either, you know, in addiction or coming out of addiction, or have been incarcerated, or no longer incarcerated, and transitioning back into society. And so what we have to be able to do is try to identify those students and find ways and means to be able to work with them in a classroom setting or outside the classroom setting. I think I can speak for the superintendent when I say that we're a hundred percent committed to doing whatever we need to do to be able to help in this process. Just little things that I've heard around the table that I know we can probably jump right in and do is when you talk about your grandparents' parents, looking at ways and means to be able to expand maybe that program to a site-based piece to, to include our schools, where there may be opportunities for parents to be, for grandparents to be able to come into our schools and use some of the tutoring platforms, make sure that the tutoring platforms are accessible to our families that way to be able to help them with homework. I think makes a lot of sense to be able to do. But on the opioid front, I mean, what we're starting to see is we're starting to see children at a much younger age be affected. So if you're talking about elementary kids that are watching their family members go through these things, you're watching our middle school students and our high school students not making the best choices and getting involved in these types of things. Social media certainly doesn't help this. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of TikTok, but you know, TikTok, Facebook, Instagram, these sorts of things are certainly influencing our families to be, or our students to be able to do things that they probably wouldn't normally do because they don't see the other side of making that choice. They see the fun part, maybe fun, and you can put it out there, something that you can try, and it's okay to be able to do, but they don't see the damage that it causes on the other side. And that part's not publicized very much. But I can tell you, we see it. And so what we have to be able to do is work with our partners around the table to be able to find ways and means to be able to help kind of solve this problem. Because again, it's, it's heartbreaking to me when I have an elementary family, for example, that may have some stress because of the choices of the adult in the family that may be addicted to an opioid or some other drug. And we have to try to find ways to be able to support them. So working with our partners at DSS, again, working with our other partners, to try to creatively find ways to be able to do that. One thing that we've done as a school district, which has been a great one for us, is that we do have mental health specialists that are employees of the district. So they're not third-party contractors. They're actually employees of the district that can sit down and travel to our different attendance areas and work with these families more intensely. And so any sort of funding that could be utilized to be able to allow us to expand those services would be outstanding for us because of the fact that I think it's important for us to do so. One thing that we talked about in our leadership meeting last week, which I think can be impactful in this process, is being able to have someone who is trained in chemical dependencies or addiction for those sorts of things from a counseling perspective, to be able to travel with our team and have those discussions at our school sites so that we can kind of impact our families a little bit earlier than we have been. I wrote down this phrase, and I heard Dr. Till would say it, and I thought it was very profound. He talked about the game has changed over the last ten years. It absolutely has. And we're starting to see the, the impact of that inside of our school buildings. And we've got to be more proactive than reactive in this situation to be able to help solve this problem. So we're a hundred percent committed.
Right. How well you're under-resourced, really, all in terms of guidance counselors, school nurses, and public schools.
I mean, so what we've done is we've done an amazing job with the SRO funding we received to be able to kind of help fill in the gaps and do some things. Ideally, we would love a school nurse in every building. That would be great to be able to help staff us. Guidance counselors, while we're doing okay, I don't think you can ever have enough, right? And so our elementary schools and our middle schools suffer a bit more than our high schools simply because of the fact that we don't have enough support there. And what we've tried to do over the last three or four years is look at how to best utilize those support staff to be able to impact the areas that we need to be impacting. A lot of what happens is they get bogged down in administrative work and don't have the opportunity to do a lot of the good old-fashioned counseling, so to speak, that we really need them to be doing to impact our children and families. It's really becoming more so not just an individual student issue, but we're talking about family issues now, because that student in middle school may have a sibling in elementary school or a sibling in high school that are all being affected differently. And what we've been trying to do is find ways to connect that. And so we certainly need, you know, a nurse in every school building. We certainly need more counseling support at the elementary level and middle school level to be able to help our families. And I think if we had that, we'd be in a much better situation than we are. We've done the best with the resources that we have, but more resources will certainly be kicked back into our buildings to be able to help do it.
Sheriff Good, I think you had something you wanted to add.
One of the things I keep hearing around here, and we've had these meetings before, and I've had them with my commissioners and the assistant school superintendent, one thing we've been trying to battle for, for go after is how to educate the parents and the grandparents and the social workers. I started the program we did in the sheriff's office about five months ago. And what I, I was telling my lieutenant, we need to educate, because, let me back it, two years ago, we started the program to educate all the high school students. I met with Dr. Fleming and Assistant Superintendent Brooks Matthews and told him what I wanted to do. So they made their part happen, the logistics. So we met with, and we put a panel together that was five, a doctor, Amy Brown, and her group was there, a pharmacist, several people to talk to the students, tell them the effects of the drug on the brain, the treatment they could get, the addiction of a parent or her child, what she had, he had done for a year, like trying to burn the house down with them in it. And it was very effective. And again, I got to thank the superintendent for working with us. Well, what we wanted to do was follow up, and we have now that COVID's over, we're doing a program called What Are You Missing? And it is to educate the parents, grandparents, social workers, anybody. Habitat of Hardy County donated the furniture. So what we do, we set up a mock bedroom, and we've got pictures of all the crime scenes of the, the stuff that the parents were missing. Because when I would go back and meet with the families after the deaths and the funerals, to try to tell them what we were doing to find out who caused this, they kept saying, I missed all the signs. I didn't know what the Q-tips were. I didn't know what the cotton swabs were. I didn't know the broken ink. So we started that program. We've done four across the county so far, and we're doing one October the fifth at Hood Memorial Church. It's been a success. I would like to see a lot more people get involved, but it's to educate the parents, grandparents. Now, I'm not asking for funding. We do this as a volunteer to try to help. So what we've noticed this past year was we're starting to see it more in the younger generation, the, the less than the, the middle schools. So I talked with Brooks Matthews and Dr. Fleming. What we're going to do this year is do that same program with the middle schools and get them educated on it like we did the high schools. So it's showing up a lot more in the younger grades. Another big thing that we saw rising and just out of one school, and the, and the, the faculty did a great job as well, was these vape pens. We confiscated two hundred and fifty vape pens. That was the school staff doing it as well as our SRO. That is showing up more and more big time. And that was one thing some of the parents and grandparents don't think nothing, or didn't think nothing about. They just thought it was...
Sad thing about that, you know, I was the first AG to investigate Juul, and the first one to sue, and the first one to hold them accountable for changing their practices for marketing and selling the product. Unfortunately, now that we got them in line, it's now these other single-use products like, what's it called? But the other, they're, they're, they're moving from one product to the other. I mean, anytime somebody's getting nicotine, their life gets far more controlled. But what it does is it changes the brain chemistry. Doc will know this. So that it, once you've created that neural pathways to addiction in the teenage brain, you make it much more likely they'll get addicted to other substances, whether it's alcohol, cocaine, amphetamines, opioids. And so there, there are no, I mean, statistically zero adult smokers who started in their twenties. Every adult who smoked started in their teens. So if we can protect our kids by that, we can help them whole life long in the process.
And to speak briefly to that point, one thing that we do see, and Sheriff goes talked about the vaping piece, and I know that's part of the conversation, is that, you know, we talk about the elevation of a student that may get caught, for example, with their vape. It may be the next time we catch them, it may be with a different substance or something that they're trying to be able to get higher from, or get a same feeling from. And so we are definitely seeing that effect more so in our high schools now than we ever have in trying to find ways to be able to educate our students and families that way. And the behaviors, as you talked about, and I've heard kind of around the table, the behaviors become a bit more aggressive sometimes with our students. And so our ability to be able to handle those, and training our principals and administrative staff and teachers who are on the front lines with those, on how to handle those types of things that may be happening inside of the classroom, is something that we have to be more aggressive with and we intend to do so over the last year and a half, two years.
That's what they're always doing, is pop.
Attorney General Stein, you know, as we're thinking about doing a strategic process, and you mentioned that other counties are doing that as well, all of the, the communities in North Carolina are getting this infusion of funds, we wondered as we were talking whether or not there was, at the state level, going to be thinking about how we might have learning networks. We're trying to do this word, technical assistance from the state level, and thinking about how, how we could scale up the best practices, that it might actually have some synergies across coming lines by investing.
No question. The Association of County Commissioners have been a tremendous partner, and they actually just hired somebody, Niddy, I forget her last name, but she's been doing opioid work for a long time, had been with the EHS. And her sole job is to help counties think strategically about how to use the resources. So County Commissioners Association, Niddy, N-I-D-D-Y, I think, her.
We've been in touch with her.
She's great.
Yes.
Did any of my fellow commissioners have anything, questions or comments, anything like that?
Sheriff, I'd like to say, sitting here listening to all this, I can help you very briefly. Very sad situation.
It is.
Young people all the way through grandparents, they personally affect every single day by, this drugs. I have a question. Is there, I know it's got to be an active attack on distribution, whether they're getting the opioids. Can I hear somebody talk about that?
Sheriff.
I can speak briefly, not only on that, but a couple of issues that we're seeing from the court side of things. Obviously, this is not only a mental health and physical health issue, it ultimately, as it continues, becomes a public safety issue. We see users go from using to dealing to becoming so desperate that they're breaking into homes to do anything they can to support their habits. And as a result, they end up having encounters with the sheriff and our other law enforcement counterparts and then the courthouse. What we're seeing with regard to options is limited. The goal of the criminal justice system is not only public safety, but it should be to make sure that the person who's coming out of the criminal justice system on the other end is a productive member of society. That should be what we should aim, that, that should be our aim, our ultimate goal. But our options along the way have become smaller and smaller and smaller. For years before taking the district attorney role, I was an assistant district attorney. I was the drug prosecutor for, I don't know, it felt like a lifetime, probably a decade. I've always been a big proponent of diversionary programs, first offender programs, where we work to get treatment in hopes that we don't have to see these people back in our courtroom. Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, the treatment options have disappeared. Just in the last month, Reentry had to shut their doors. And as a result of that, our drug diversion program, who, which was run through Reentry, is gone. So I've had my, my assistant PAs or, and myself, are working to figure out what are the other options. We can put people on deferred prosecutions, conditional discharge, where they plead guilty, but they're given the opportunity to receive treatment, do community service, things of that nature. At the end, their case gets dismissed, which is a benefit to everyone. They all have a conviction on their record. They receive treatment. They hopefully will stick with that. But the program we were using is gone. So...
What happened?
I think it was a combination, mostly grants, and it just dried up, unfortunately. And so we're, we're actively looking for new options, new treatment options, that we can require individuals to go through as part of their probationary sentences or part of their diversionary agreements. So I'm open for suggestions from anyone. Please contact me and let me know what programs may be available. So we're facing an uphill battle on, on that front. I'm also a big proponent of treatment. front. I'm also a big proponent of treatment courts. Of course, we have a veterans treatment court here in Harty County, and it has been very successful in providing support to our veterans, many of whom have self-medicated to help with their PTSD diagnoses. And they are becoming sober. They are employed. They are supporting their families again. They are working within our communities, and it's been a fantastic benefit. But it's a heavy lift. And our office, as well as law enforcement, sheriff's office and other partners, we're, we're spread pretty thin already. I would love to have a drug treatment court in this county because we need it. But I don't have the personnel to support it. So...
Not at that. You don't have the treatment partners.
The treatment options too. And we have fantastic treatment partners. Daymark and our other partners have been wonderful. And that's a big lift for them also. So we, we, I would love to put a drug treatment court in that courthouse for this district, but currently I don't have the manpower to support it. It's a, it's a full-time effort and don't have the treatment options to really support it as well. So that would be one of my top priorities from a courthouse standpoint. As to what we're doing to go after the dealers, the sheriff's office and our other law enforcement community partners have done a fantastic job in this county of investigating over these deaths. They are really, in my opinion, becoming a model for other counties as to how to investigate them and how to proceed. And as a result, we've been able to charge several individuals with death by distribution, which is a new tool in our, in our prosecution toolkit. And it, it makes an impact and it makes a statement. And we haven't really had very many come to court yet, just because it takes time, work, and force them, you know, come to a final disposition. But we have pled a few cases to various forms of homicide or death by distribution. And they're doing a fantastic job to combat that from that side. But we cannot prosecute it away. There's no way we can prosecute it away. We have to have the treatment options to plug people into, to hopefully divert them away from the criminal justice system in the end.
Mr. Stein, she's done a great job, her office as well, because the one that, that did plead guilty that I'm aware of, I think he got, what, twelve years and then he got an additional twelve years?
He, his sentence was sort of a combined deal because he was not only facing state charges, he was facing federal charges as well. I think on the state side, it was somewhere between two and four years, but then it was an additional time that was tacked on at the end with the federal time. But it ended up being a hefty sentence at the end of the day because we work with our federal partners as well, the U.S. Attorney's Office.
So he can't kill anybody else for about twenty years. About twenty years.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
I just want to say, people, so I think that I listened to all the stakeholders who were there and what they can find, but community and, and dealing with minority communities, it's a serious issue. And I think that one of the tools that we should be reaching out to is to fight this, especially in the minority communities. We need to have our ministers at these tables where you all are discussing this issue. It has been a learning experience for me as well. Some of the things I knew and some of the things I didn't. So I got an education on a lot of this issue. It is a serious issue because it has, it has become epidemic in our society. And if we don't do something, something that's meaningful and something that's going to move this issue, it's gonna get worse. It really is gonna get worse. When you start talking about children, how it has affected children's lives, and that's the family structure. And if we don't come together and find some kind of means, we're not going to be able to end the epidemic or whatever. But I think education, education is the key. And that means going into the different communities and educating the people of how serious this is. Because a lot of people don't understand, I am, I, I think God every day that my kids have grown up and they've been exposed to it, but never been involved in it. And that comes from faith. That's what I think. And all of us here around this table can be, can play a big role in educating the public. We know what's happening, but a lot of the public does not know. They don't know how serious this issue is. And I, I'm just pleased to be here to hear some of the things that I have hearing this morning. I've never been exposed to it, I hear it. It's, it's an educational thing for me. And I think it certainly could be for a lot of people. But I do believe we have got to stop dancing around and reach out to, to the communities, especially to the faith, the ministers, and also around the churches and poor, a community of them together. And I think that that will help us move this issue further than we have been. Okay.
You know, I just wanted to say, you know, when I hear everyone around the table, you know, when we're talking, and once we get introduced to the sheriff and we get introduced to the DA's office and we end up with the murders, and the problem's already there, I think kind of what Mr. McCoy was saying, we've got to really hit with education. And it started, I had no idea that it was becoming an issue in middle school. I had two kids that just started sixth grade, and the sheriff's saying I got to look at Q-tips and broken pins. Man, I mean, I guess I got to count years of Q-tips now because I don't even know what that means. Also, you know, with me, and you know, shame to say, other, two years ago, I don't think I even knew it or heard of it. I, I don't even know what it is today. I understand it's some really bad stuff, it can kill you. But other than that, I'm just not, you know, educated enough in there. So I think that, you know, one of the keys is I hope that we do everything, finish programs and Reentry. I agree with everything that's been said. But I think in order to truly stop it, we've got to, we've got to spend more time educating. It sounds like we got to start hitting hard in about fifth grade, sixth grade so that the kids understand. You know, I, I, you know, my older kids, I used to tell them all the time, do not take any pills from anybody. You know, I didn't know what I was saying. I just knew you got a headache, you don't have a headache, you call up, you know, you don't take anything. Because I didn't know what else. And now, I don't, you know, what are they doing with these vapes? I see people vaping all the time. I, I don't, you know, what's in it? What are they doing? And I just think we've got to educate them. We've got to get them before they get introduced to this math and this sheriff. Once they're there and with our law enforcement, you know, it's a whole different way we've got to treat that. But I do want to see it focused heavily. Educate them, include these. And don't feel bad, I can't do the math either. You know, I, I like to tell you, but I'm proud of our schools because I can tell you my sixth graders are a lot smarter than I was. They do a great job. But I do want to spend a lot of time in education. I think that's the key. I agree with this, McCoy. There's lots of ways to do it. But we've got to hit these kids so they understand it. We've got a lot of schools to get out.
One of the things they're doing now, maybe, is, and we talked about it last week in our meeting, and I'm sure you've seen it, Mr. Stein, is it started out with, now they're color coding this stuff to attract the younger generation. I mean, it, it, it's red, green, yellow, they got it bagged up like candy. And, and to make it more attractive to the younger, that, that was the reason we decided to go into the middle schools issue.
See, I, I mean, as a parent, I can tell you, I walked to my house, I saw a bag of candy. I wouldn't think twice about it. You know, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even register. We're in there smoking a bunch of, but I have to register. I smell that, but I don't, I need to get educated. And I'm assuming many others do.
Commissioners, I mean, if we, if you want, I mean, I could do a quick education at one of our meetings, or we could do it separately, maybe a twenty-minute or fifteen minutes if we want to have our local community right here further educated about the problem. I'd be happy to volunteer.
We need to, I just want everyone to pay attention. D-top centers. In the eighties, in seventies, eighties, all those years, that was true. Up in the Vietnam War, there were plenty of clinics, but you know, we had D-top centers. Here in Harty County, we had D-top centers for the employees that were working in the plants. In the plants, you know, you had a problem, hey, they call you and they would send you to the D-top center. They give you three times. They send you three times. You didn't clean yourself up in a very time, you lost your job. But we don't see D-top centers then anymore. How can people get help if there's nowhere for them to get help? And, and these, these centers here is very, very important to parents and adults. So we need to think about how we can, how we can do this, how we can bring this back, how we can help people take this money and use it to help those. Because you know what? If we don't do something, we won't even be safe in our homes. You won't be safe.
I want to thank everybody for being here today. We've run over our time of about fifteen minutes, and I know everybody's got plenty to do. I want to thank Attorney General Stein for being here. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. And appreciate everyone else being here. Nothing else?
Can I just say one more before?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank everybody and remark on the talent, the commitment, the passion. I mean, it's, it's helpful. I mean, you guys are absolutely dedicated to trying to do everything you can to attack this crisis. And so I wish you Godspeed. I look forward to seeing what your strategic plan, how it unfolds, and then look forward to seeing the wise investments the commissioners make and try to further that work. So thank you for having me today.
And I've got one more piece of housekeeping that you and we are with us to say. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to second. I would favorably say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.